I would like to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. I have an announcement to read before we get started. On April 14th, 2015, at 6:00 PM, the Board of School Directors of the Northern Lebanon School District gathered to provide information to and to receive legal advice from the Solicitor of the School District. The Board of School Directors did not take official action or deliberate on School District business. The closed-door gathering is consistent with the Supreme Court's ruling in Smith versus Township of Richmond, which was issued on December 16th, 2013. Okay, thank you, and now, Dr. Warner?
Okay, just so I don't have to turn my neck, I'm gonna go over here and talk. And I'm not gonna say an awful lot because I looked over there at the size of the stack of green papers, and you're really not here to see me, you're here to hear what's going on in the community and what the community has suggestion wise for us. But I do want to talk a little bit about the IU-13. I am the IU-13's representative from the Northern Lebanon Board to the IU-13 Board. And I have, you've heard me say before about some of the things we've done, some of the important things that I've done, that not that I've done, that we have done. Can you tell I'm nervous? There's way too many things there for me, okay? So just bear with me. But there's three things, one that's coming up, and two that we just did attend, and I thought they were really important, I thought they were really meaningful, and not just to me, but to the students and I think to the community also. And the first one I had gone to was the IU-13 last Wednesday had, they call it a convention, but it's a nice time for us to get to go to other schools, tour the other schools, talk to other school districts, see what's happening there, compare what we're doing here, get ideas from them. We're all about getting good ideas from other places. And the speakers for the evening talked about a mentor program they have between members of the community that come in and actually take time, probably about half an hour, that they work with individual kids in the classrooms. And Dave was there that evening, Dr. Bell was there that evening. I think you came away as impressed with the program as I did. And this was Donegal High School, and I'm hoping that we can bring some type of mentor program like that here to Northern Lebanon. Students spoke how great it was, but mentors just, it was almost as important to them as it was to the students. Another activity that I've just gone to was this last Friday, and I have pictures, they're on my phone, I have no idea how to get them off my phone because my daughter, say it's a trip, my daughter-in-law did not come to my house today because her, because my grandchildren were sick, so I have, okay, I have no idea how to get them off my phone. I couldn't even get them to my computer to print pictures that pass around to you. However, the event was the Spring Student Mini Business Bazaar. And one is held in Lancaster, and one is held in Lebanon. The one in Lebanon this year was held at Cornwall Manor. And I couldn't get there until after the afternoon kindergarten started, because my grand-nephew's in afternoon kindergarten. So I got there a little bit late, so a lot of the goodies were already bought. But we went in there and, of course, I had to find my Northern Lebanon kids, got a picture of them, and they were so, so, so excited. Of course, I have the pictures, I won't show tonight that I don't have. But it said Mini Business Bazaar. The students have something that they make in their classrooms, and you've seen me bring some of them here and show them already. And I see you nodding, thank you, this is helping me through my nerves this year. They had lots of jewelry, some really neat, cool jewelry, I bought some of that. They had, um, some of the students from Northern Lebanon that are now in the out-of-school program are being served at One Cumberland. They took quartz, and they put holes in these quartz, and they made these nice little hotpads or tridents out of them. And one that I bought a whole bunch of, because I have little people in the house and around me, is they take, they were phone books, cut off at the bottom, wrapped with really interesting kinds of duct tape, and they serve as card holders. So it's not only for kids, it could be for senior citizens or someone who might have struggled, something like that. Really neat ideas that these kids are giving back to the community, they're learning how to be salesmen, they had to make change for me, so they're learning, they're learning to be out there in business, they're going to interact with people. Great, great, great program. Cool, I spent a lot of money there. Okay, and the last thing I just want to talk about is, there's, I think it's coming up next Tuesday, my next Tuesday, next Tuesday, the IU-13 Partnership Appreciation Luncheon. And this is talking again about involving the community. There's businesses out there that allow some of the students to come, work for them for half a day, a whole day, but there again, giving them life skills, teaching them how to interact with the public, job skills. So this is the IU-13's way, we have a luncheon and invite the businesses come in so we can fully appreciate all the great jobs that they've done and what they can do working with our students and how we can give back to the community. So those are the three things I want to talk about. Not everybody realizes exactly what the IU-13 does, and I just wanted to show a couple of things that they do do, so I won't be giving those in my report later, because most of you will clear out before we ever get to the end of the meeting. Okay, two more items that we need to do yet. We as a board, we always like to take a little bit of quiet time to get our minds ready to face whatever it is, whatever problems that we're gonna be going through this evening, and listening to the community concerns. So you don't have to prolong with us, with me, if you don't want to, I ask for your respectful silence, and I hope a lot of you can take what we're saying to heart. But dear Lord, thank you for bringing everybody here tonight, thank you for the safe travels that you provided for us to get here and fill this auditorium here at Lickdale. Many of us don't stop to think about all the blessings that we actually have, and Lord, you've given us so many that we don't always stop and take the time to think about. You've given us wonderful children, wonderful children who you've given talents to that they can turn around, come back and help the community. You've given us concerned and loving parents that are also concerned about giving back to the community and having the best for their kids, because kids are important. You've also given us a very fine community that we live in here, a community that cares, a community that the Board, the teachers, the administrators, the students, we all need to work together in a collaboration and in a mindset that you can give us that we will do our best, do our best for the children, that it's our job to educate. Thank you for bringing us all here, let an aura of peace and good ideas come out, and let us all pay attention, be respectful, I know you're gonna help us do all that, give us that guidance, Lord, and in your name we pray.
Amen.
And please turn now, the last thing you first are meeting.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and the jury of all for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna get on with, and the first order of business will be to elect a, well, first, a temporary president, but then to elect a president. So I will now entertain a motion for a recommendation for a temporary president. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second for that? Okay, then, all in favor? Okay, all right, then I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our temporary president to conduct the election.
So as if you haven't heard enough from me already from the opening. Okay, the nomination committee, which is Bonnie and myself, we talked to members of the Board, that's always good to know what this is supposed to be doing. Thank you very much, Mary. Well, the first thing it's supposed to do is ask the nominating committee for the slate of officers, so why don't we do that, Bonnie?
For president tonight, Glenn Gray and Sue Warner have been put on our slate.
Are there any additional nominations for president? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the motion, entertain a motion to close the Okay. Mary, do you have a ballot to speak here?
Before the ballots, before the ballots go out, can we make a statement to let the Board members know our position?
I'm nodding my head, pardon me.
Oh, you're the acting president, so I will, I take that as a yes. Okay, well, last week I was nominated from the Board, and I do appreciate the confidence. I didn't realize what a, how that would stir up a horn's nest, so to speak, and that somehow I am a lightning rod for something that, within the Board, you know, I don't know exactly what it is, but for some reason, I do instill some kind of fear or something in some of the Board members for their response. But I get that because we all, all of us on the Board, regardless of our political persuasions, do feel very strongly about the children of Northern Lebanon and will fight for that position at all costs, so I understand that. But I, you know, I do want to kind of bring up, because last week it was kind of thrown out there and it's been circulated around, and, you know, the idea that somehow my serving as Board President would be a conflict of interest. So I wanted to just throw it out there. My belief is that it would not be a conflict of interest if, and the big word is if, I remove myself from the negotiating committee that deals with the association. In Pine Grove, they have a similar system, they have a Board President who is an educator, his wife is an educator in our school district, he has served proudly as Board President, and he, in conversing with him, removes himself from the nomination committee totally, there is no communication back and forth with the nomination committee, with the President, and he's served very, very, I'd say proudly, I respect him, I respect his integrity, and I expect, and I disrespect him as a person. And so to somehow throw it out there, you know, that, oh, I'm a school teacher, so somehow I'm going to undermine the negotiation of this district with that bargaining unit, you know, I mean, I'm a big boy, I've got big shoulders, I can take it, but it kind of is like, where is this coming from? Kind of reminds me of a story of three boys. And three boys, it's a hot summer day, they go out, and one boy has a nice big ice cream cone. And he's eating this ice cream cone, and the other two boys are looking at him and saying, "Oh, man, that looks really good," but they don't say anything, they're just thinking of it. And finally, one boy says, "Wow, I really liked that ice cream cone, can I have a bite?" And the kid looks at him and says, "You know, if you hadn't said anything and just bullied your way into trying to make me give you ice cream cone, I would have given you a bite." And continues to eat his ice cream cone. So the other kid, obviously, is just sitting there, he doesn't do anything. And then when the kid eats the last bit of the ice cream, the boy who's been sitting there patiently not saying anything says, "Hey, wait a minute, you didn't give me, you didn't even offer me a piece of your ice cream cone." And the kid, the kid says, "Well, you didn't ask. If you had asked, I would have gladly given you the ice cream, by the ice cream cone." And then obviously, the moral of the story here is that it doesn't matter what the excuse is. It could be that, oh, there's a, there must be a conflict of interest because he's a school teacher, and, you know, he would go and run to the school teachers and give them the best thing. Obviously, if I'm not on the negotiating committee, I would have no input in that. So if they don't say that, they could say, "Oh, well, I'm wearing a maroon shirt instead of a blue and gold shirt tonight, so he mustn't be all that Northern Lebanon proud, so he shouldn't be a president for that." So the reason really is immaterial, and I think that we get too hung up on trying to throw a little innuendos out there to try to sidetrack us from the real issue, which is challenging our students, challenging our administration, and challenging ourselves to make Northern Lebanon a better place to be. I know from what I've heard, just through the grapevine, that I do not have the votes tonight. I am fine with that, because I believe that if the vote goes the way it is, we will have ample leadership to navigate this through until November. But I will keep my vote, myself in the ballot, because like I have every time, I believe that the Board and the public have a right to have choice, that that way, when, if the other, my opponent, so it's not my opponent, but, well, say, my opponent becomes president, it's not that, oh, well, nobody else ran, it was that the majority of the Board decided that she would run. But I help hold my head up high, because my feelings about Northern Lebanon and its ability to be an educational institution is not wavered, not because there are people that make what I consider to be allegations that just are just in left field. So I'm going to leave it at that, I am proud to run, but I also understand the reality of what is going on tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
I just want to say, I continue to support you, the nomination from last week, I supported, I gave it lots of thought this week, and I still support you because you are an elected official, the people knew that you were an educator, and still felt that you could represent the people up here on the Board as an educator. And in fact, we're starting to look across the Board and know that a lot of us are educators and have education in our background. So I think if we start eliminating people from that position because of what they do in their other life, then we're certainly not looking at a good candidate. So I, my vote stands with my nomination from last week, so thank you for allowing your name to continue.
As I talked to you last night, when, what I said is I found out how many people do think you're one heck of a nice guy. And that was said over and over again, it came down to the, you guys have enough problems on the Board right now, this might be one more. You probably don't want to open yourself up to it, but as I've said to you, and I already said and I'm gonna say it again, I found out how many people think you are doing a fine job and you're a good person.
Just in December, when we voted for president, it was an open ballot. I really don't see why we have to go through and...
I think it should definitely be an open ballot again.
I think what we did is we voted this way, and then Mary read the results and who voted.
Okay, that sounds fair, Steve.
Okay, I will read the results of the ballot. First vote, Susan Warner on Matt Warner. Glenn Gray, Rachel England. Glenn Gray, Glenn Gray. Susan Warner, Bonnie Bixler. Susan Warner, Stephen Lum. Glenn Gray, Amy Sal. Susan Warner, David Howe. And Susan Warner, Susan Warner. Five for Warner, three for Gray.
Sue, congratulations, and I think you did an excellent job as president.
And this is why I didn't want to talk too long, because I saw that we had quite a few of these. And my preliminary procedure, it is what it is, I'm gonna do my best, and bear with me, correct me if I'm wrong, that's okay, I'm not gonna get too upset. And perhaps Bonnie's gonna help me out here and tell me I should actually be looking at the rest of the agenda first before we proceed, so, all right. What do they say, it takes a town, it takes a city, it takes a village, there we go. And guys, let's go forward, it's a village, okay. First of all, the announcement of executive sessions, the Board met an executive session following the April 7th, 2015 Committee Meeting to discuss personnel issues. The Board will meet, actually, we have already met, and Mary did read the statement on that one. The Board will additionally meet an executive session immediately following the regularly scheduled Board Meeting on April 14th, that would be this evening, to discuss contractual issues. Moving on to the minutes, everybody should have received the minutes with their agenda. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Now, I'm gonna go into Fair Board mode here, and what I do at Fair Board, so I'm gonna use all the wrong words, but any corrections? And it would only be for the actual meeting we had, not for committee meeting. If not, we file them for audit, I don't know. Let's move ahead to the agenda. Are there any corrections to the agenda, or will we be adopting it as presented? Any additions? Not, then we'll be moving on to administrative reports, and, do you know how nervous I am? You can't believe it. I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the directions. Seconds? Do I have to vote, or do we just move on? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay. Can I move on to administrative reports now, starting with Dr. McNerney?
Good evening.
What?
Oh, sorry. I have the privilege tonight of speaking about Rebecca Foxwell. Unfortunately, she was not able to make it tonight, but she has been selected as another Teacher of the Year finalist from Northern Lebanon. Much of what I say would not be able to do her justice for what she does in her classroom, but I thought the clearest picture would be the letter that I wrote to nominate her, so I'm going to read that letter tonight. Rebecca Foxwell has worked at Lickdale Elementary in the Northern Lebanon School District since 2010 as a first-grade teacher. During my years with Northern Lebanon, I have worked with few teachers who have possessed the ambition, compassion, dedication to students, and natural teaching ability, as Becca displays on a daily basis. From the time I hired her, I knew I would eventually be writing this recommendation. Professionally speaking, Becca is knowledgeable, a great team player, a lifelong learner. She is passionate about teaching and helping students, and uses her natural skills to focus on improving academic achievement and developing the good character traits within every student. She stays current with new information and is always searching, and searching for and willing to try innovative ideas and strategies. Becca is always caring and compassionate with all students, and takes the time to make personal connections with the students and their families. She is dependable and always willing to share ideas and listen to others. Becca's instructional leadership is always focused around what is best for children. She has earned the respect of her colleagues by being available, being knowledgeable and innovative, and creating a positive, supportive environment for her colleagues. She creates and provides resources for teachers online, and volunteers for programs and activities throughout the entire school year, actively involved in all building functions. In her classroom, Becca creates a positive learning environment. She motivates struggling students and keeps them engaged, using a variety of effective instructional strategies. Her kind and caring demeanor, as well as high expectations for all, is well-received by students, by all the students she teaches. Her patience with students and genuine caring benefit all in her classroom. She is an exemplary role model for students and staff. She incorporates her other talents into the classroom as well, in particular, singing. I enjoy the songs she creates and sings to and with students as part of her daily routines and classroom management. I absolutely love visiting her classroom because it is inspiring to witness her talents I've learned of many things just by watching her. On a personal note, Becca has a great sense of humor and enjoys every situation. She has contributed many creative ideas within her school, and has truly inspired students to be better at everything they do, academically and socially. She has also been a collaborative and supportive colleague to all teachers, and an exceptional professional to me. Dedicated, talented, intelligent, personable, creative, hardworking, compassionate, enthusiastic, naturally gifted teacher, and a lifelong learner are just a few of the words that describe Rebecca Foxwell. Without reservation, I highly recommend she be considered the A Teacher of the Year. She is a phenomenal teacher, well-deserving of this title, and would serve as an incredible role model for all teachers. So if you see her, please congratulate her and wish her luck as she continues her journey.
Are you ready?
My name is Ben Wanger, I'm the principal at East Hanover in Johnson Elementary. Tonight I'll be even, be giving the East Hanover presentation. I have with me a special guest, her name is Mrs. Sue Gabel, she can come on up here while. She teaches third grade at East Hanover, and she's one of our veteran teachers, and she did a nice work here with one of our students, and she'll be introducing him to you to read a story that he wrote.
Good evening, everybody, I'm happy to be here tonight. I brought a special guest, author, and photographer, his name is Joel Seibert. I picked Joel's story for tonight because he was so excited while he was planning his story and compiling all the pictures. And we entered the story in the Lebanon Community Libraries, write and illustrate in our book all my students, and this year and in past years. We, it'll take a while to find out the results, but it's really a good opportunity for the students, because they, they're not just writing for the pleasure of writing, or writing for a grade, but writing with a purpose. And the purpose was this competitive contest, and they would be having their stories judged against other Lebanon County schools. Last year, one of my students won first place in third grade, so we were really proud of Rebecca, of Rachel Swank last year. And Joel left baseball practice early to be here tonight, and he asked me in advance, he said, "Mrs. Gabel, do you think there'd be a lot of people there?" I said, "Well, let's just look at the table, Joel, we won't look at the audience," he said. So his story is entitled, "The Unusual Day My Famed Goats Arrived." And he, like I said, he's the author and photographer for this story.
The story about my goats began when I got addition to our house. One of the men at work... One of the men that worked on our house was a man named Marlon. One day Marlon, one day Marlon asked my mom if he wanted fainy goats. We thought about it for about a week, and now my mom texts Marlon back, "Yes." We were going to get the goats for free. Something surprising happened while we were waiting. My brother Owen was walking back and forth on a log. All of the sudden, Owen fell off the wall and broke his arm. My dad walked to him to see if he was okay. My dad saw that he broke his arm and carried him up to the house, and gently laid him on the side of the road. Mom asked what happened. Dad answered, "Owen broke his arm." My mom ran into the house and grabbed the goat. She ran outside and gave the goat to my dad. My mom tried to calm him down, but brother was crying. Dad called 911. Ambulance came and took Owen and my mom to the hospital. Marlon arrived behind the ambulances Jeep with Marlon Cupcake in the back of the Jeep. Marlon asked what happened to Owen. My dad told him that Owen broke his arm. Marlon and his two sons carried the two goats down to the pen. Later we found out that Owen broke both of his bones. No pieces broke off, broke off of his bone. That was a relief because if there was pieces broke off the bone, he would have had to get surgery. My fainy goats' names are Marlon and Cupcake. They are brother and sister. Marlon is a boy and Cupcake is a girl. The kind of goat I have is a fainy goat. If you scare or starve them, they faint but they don't close their eyes. When they faint, their muscles twitch. Now that the goats arrived, I need to learn how to take care of them. First I had to make the pen using fencing. My dad and my family helped to build it. You need a shelter for the goats, and you can make it with wood boards or buy one at the store. In their little house, you need to put straw on the floor to keep them warm. Put some fainy in their pen, walk on or jump over. Put a door in the pen so you can go in the pen with them. Early cut a fish and put it in their little house, and put water in it. Last, I needed to get my goats and carry them down into the pen. After that, I had to buy goat feed at the feed mill. Or you can make some out of corn, hay, some food scraps, and some goat pellets from the feed mill. They eat nonstop. Goats can grow big curly horns and they will buck you. It will hurt more as they get older. Goats have hooves. You need to watch and fight and buck horns, it is hilarious. I love goats because they are soft, funny, and playful. Now you know about my unusual day and how I take care of my goats.
He has an extra page all about the author, so we'll have to read that too.
Hi, I am Joel Seibert. I'm going to tell you a little about myself. I am nine years old and my birthday is February 15th. My story is about the most shocking but one of the most exciting days of my life. I got really scared because my mom, dad, brother Owen, and I, myself, never bucked on my leg before. I go to East Hanover Elementary School. My favorite foods are baked potatoes and chicken nuggets. Let me tell a little about me.
Thank you. Well, as I said in our opening prayer when I talked about the talent that we've got here in Northern Lebanon, right there, you just see it. Thank you very, very much, Joel, and dare I hope you're going to join 4H and show the Lebanon area fair with your guts? I know where your mother works. But seriously, thank you very, very, very much, that was. And that should finish up our administrative reports, and we'll move into special presentations. The High School Student of the Month for April are Carrie Buffenmeyer and Michael Long Jr. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Clubs, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. The Middle School Student of the Month for April is Anthony, I'm sorry, Anthony, Jessica Bell. This is where you're supposed to be helping me out when I don't know names, okay? This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club.
Hi, I'm Carrie Buffenmeyer, as I said, I go to Northern Lebanon School, surprise. I'd like to start off by thanking the students, my fellow students, and my teachers at Northern Lebanon. They definitely contribute to make me what I am today, but I am a little disappointed. I wish that this award meant a little bit more. But, you know, at least I can say that I earned what I got. And that I didn't get Student of the Month because my mom called and complained because I didn't get it. Thank you.
And we have one more student that we want to honor also. The East Hanover Elementary Student of the Third Marking Period is Aiden Crawl. This award is sponsored by the East Hanover Lions Club. Are either of the other two recipients here? Okay, let's give them a well-deserved honor. And now we'd like to turn over the microphone to our student council board rep.
Okay, so some past events, we'll look at it. Ninety-six students came with eighteen chaperones. We raised $1,061 to St. Jude's. The FFA banquet was very successful for the FFA department. Some upcoming events is prom, which is May 1st, and the theme being a masquerade. The Student Council State Conference was given to us, it will be held here at NL next year. And we're starting to get things together, like speakers that want to have speak at our conference. And I was also given a note from FBLA to read. The Northern Lebanon Future Business Leaders of America would like to report their club status. FBLA has had several of its members compete at the Regional Leadership Conference in December. Later this month, Nate Lyon, Jacob Pimentel, and Rachel Hugler are competing at the State Leadership Conference. At Christmas time, FBLA members made cards to send to children in Africa with bees. For Easter, members decorated and filled fifty-two baskets with candy to donate to the Jonestown Outreach Pantry. An HR guest speaker and the VA came in and spoke to the members about resumes and how to impress employees with their resumes. In the future, FBLA will participate in thought by creating a stand with games for children to play. They also plan on participating in an adopted highway program. They are currently in progress of doing mock interviews with the administration.
Does anybody have any questions for Haley? If not, thank you very much for your participation in this board and especially for your report this evening. Any items under Old Business? If not, then it's time to move on to our public input session. And interested persons must complete a request to address the board, and I believe, is there anybody that has not filled one out yet that wanted to fill one out? When addressing the board, please state your name, address, prior to starting your comments. We're going to give you a five-minute time period. And Mary, do you want to keep the time, or is there somebody over there that's? If it involves anything using my phone, I don't know that I can do this, so. Alright, old-fashioned, trust me, old-fashioned works. Alright, and I apologize in advance if I do mispronounce anybody's name, certainly it's not intentional. But how about if we start this evening with Michael Hess?
First of all, I'd like to commend the people for showing. You people are appreciated to be here. We need yous. My first question to the board is, this whole fiasco started, everything came downhill. The board is not paid. Our administrator is paid. He's not being held responsible for what happened. Dr. Bell should be held responsible. He's paid very handsomely to take care of these problems. And he did not do his job. Need I say anymore?
Thank you, Mr. Hess, we'll move on to Erin Olrick.
I'm a little bit longer, so you may have to cut me off. I'm Erin Olrick, I live at Old Canal Drive in Neitha. I'm speaking tonight as a concerned mother of a child with an IEP, that's an Individualized Education Plan. That plan is currently in noncompliance on multiple levels, and I believe that I represent a district-wide problem involving many other parents whose child had, whose children have IEPs that are in noncompliance. First, some background on my situation. My son is a second grader at East Hanover. He has had an IEP for speech therapy services since transitioning from his preschool IU services in kindergarten. I first learned of the noncompliance issue via a small article I happened across in the most recent issue of the Viking Voice. Let me read that article to you. Due to a recent shortage of speech pathologists, the students receiving speech and language services at East Hanover and the autistic support classroom at Fredericksburg Elementary School have made the transition to online services. The children are set up on a computer with video and headset capabilities which link to a therapist to students for assessment, monitoring, and consultation. The goal is to provide consistent sessions that reciprocate the quality of those delivered face-to-face. While this is a new skeptical method, there is research-based evidence that concludes online speech therapy is most promising and the mode in which several special education services may be presented in the future. And then there's a bullet point list of advantages and benefits, and due to time, I'm going to skip that. Each telepractice provider has different tools and manipulatives included that may increase success rate among students. Such tools assist in correct placement of the child's tongue after it's modeled by their pathologist. These items are currently not available with our program. However, the students are observed as enjoying their new learning experience thus far. After reading this article, I did some research on IEPs. So for those of you who don't know about IEPs, I'd like to share the following excerpt from Pennsylvania's Bureau of Special Education. The IEP is written by a team of people, including parents. School districts and charter schools must give the child of all, the child of all special education-related services and other support services listed in the IEP. The IEP is the contract between you and the school for services your child needs to make progress. If the school does not follow the IEP, you can file a complaint with the Pennsylvania Bureau of Special Education. The following are ways in which I have discovered on my own that my child's IEP was broken. Number one, I was not informed, nor did I approve, of the change of my son's services from face-to-face to online. Number two, I was not informed of his speech therapist leave of absence, nor was I given the opportunity to address the implications of her leave. Number three, I was not notified, nor did I approve of the change of location of his speech therapy services. Number four, I did not receive his quarterly assessment for the last two quarters. I am supposed to receive him quarterly as delineated in his IEP. That is, six months I have gone without hearing anything about his progress. These four noncompliance issues are issues I am aware of. My son's IEP is not lengthy. How many other parents haven't been notified of these changes? I cannot emphasize enough my discouragement with our district's apparent disregard for following state law. IEPs are not suggestions, they are legally binding documents. Not only am I discouraged with noncompliance of IEPs, but this article, which I was informed came out of the superintendent's office, makes me concerned about the direction of our school. Quote, "While this is a new skeptical method, there is research-based evidence that concludes online speech therapy is the most promising mode in which several special education services may be presented in the future." Reality, we as parents value our children's face-to-face interactions with teachers and professionals at school. While technology has its place in the classroom, supplemented teacher or professional, it should never take the place of a teacher or professional staff. Particularly in the case of speech therapy, it's imperative that students have face-to-face interactions. Sound and picture quality is often diminished. Tactile methods cannot be used to assist with corrections. Who oversees the students in the setting? At East Hanover, my son says he's being taken to the emotional support room, and that the emotional support teacher is trying to oversee them while she has emotional support students in her classroom. Autistic children especially need face-to-face interaction to succeed. Quote, "These items are currently not available with our program. However, the students are observed as enjoying their new learning experience thus far." Reality, technology tools described are not even being provided to our children, and fun is not an accurate measure of successful learning. So, how am I doing on time? One minute. I've made you aware of some problems with IEPs. Now how do we fix them? I don't want to stand up here and be a complainer. So hire appropriate number of staff to do the job that needs done for every student, not just some. In this case, hire a speech therapist for that time period. I've also heard from friends that we are short on gifted teachers as well, and some of those teachers, some of those children aren't receiving the services at all that are delineated in their IEPs. Educate new hires on policies, procedure, and law. Update current staff when new legislation comes into effect. Communicate, be honest, and insist upon transparency at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olrick. Pam Schur.
My name's Pam Schur, and I live on Freeport Road in Lebanon.
May I interrupt you for one minute?
Sure.
I just, I know we had discussed this, and I see Dr. Kinsey in the back, and I want to apologize to Mrs. Olrick that you've experienced that. I think that we were definitely told that you were going to be informed of that, and I would like to know when we can have an update. It was at, it was at a public meeting that we discussed this, and we had specific questions about how that was going to come about. And to me, this is very important right now, not to interrupt you.
Oh, no, I didn't want to go after her, but I want to make sure.
I want to make sure that we address this.
He's back there. President? Do you want to wait until the end, or do you want to brief us on how the speech therapy program has come along? So then, so we'll be getting it up again via email or till next meeting? Okay.
Thank you very much, John.
Oh, one, one, sorry, just while I, so don't worry here, just while I got it, because there was a mention about, within this, just while we're all on this topic, that there was research on this, a particular method of, of instruction. Can you get a copy of that, Tom, for Dr. Bell?
Maya? I live on Freeport Road in Northern Lebanon, New Coria. I'm an NL graduate, as is my husband. I have two children in the high school. I'm a part of the business community in Lebanon County. I sat and listened to many different kinds of board meetings. I sat and listened to many different kinds of board meetings. I've been on several committees in my business life as well as my personal life. My daughter is an avid volleyball player, so I've been involved with getting some programs together for that. I must say, however, that last week was my first school board meeting. I felt the need to make an opinion of what was going on here for myself. You hear a lot of chatter in the community, and I wanted to really make the opinion all my own. I feel like there have been many wrongs made on both sides. Mr. Howe, it's unfortunate situation you had, having your home vandalized. I sympathize with that. I'm sure that wasn't a pleasant experience. However, the speech last week to the board, parents, and comments made to Mr. Gray were very distasteful and inappropriate. My takeaway from last week is this: We simply need to gain trust on all sides once again, and we can do that with transparency. I'm here this evening to bring light to my disappointment in the board's decision to make the 6 o'clock meeting private, when we were adamant last week that it was going to be open to the public. The perception, whether the perception is right or wrong, the perception is that there's something to hide. There's something to hide from the public. That's why we're doing things behind closed doors. We as taxpayers apply funding for the administration and the school district, the solicitor, and as well as a lot of other things. And I feel that even though if whoever came up with the idea to make an executive meeting, I think somebody should have spoke up and let them know that we were working on transparency. And again, right or wrong, I think that we should have been able to be open to that. I came in last week with open mind on what was going on, and I have to tell you, I left very disappointed. And I once again was disappointed to find out that the meeting was private, and it solidifies the opinions I've been hearing throughout the community. Thank you for your time. I pray that some of you will wake up and see what effects this has to do with the community at large and to all of our students. Do not think for one second that the older students do not see what is going on here. To teach your children and the children that you're around to respect administration and the board when we cannot respect each other or the community.
Thank you very much, Pam. Rachel, and I'm sorry, I still haven't learned from you last time for a sec.
Secondly. Hi, me. Good morning. My name is Rachel Sekelik, and I'm on Blackberry Lane. Mr. Lum, your comments last week indicated that you hoped offering Coach Boucher his position back would end the petty and childish behavior and concerns of people in the community, that it would be a step toward unity. While the community was happy the board took this step, there are several issues that would need to be addressed before a necessary trust, much less unity, behind the current administration can be reestablished. For starters, I would suggest avoiding terms like petty and childish when describing community members and their concerns. Such characterations do nothing to foster goodwill between the administration, the board, and the community. One of the constant complaints of parents is how they have been disrespected by board members, not just privately, but at public meetings. But ultimately, our concerns are not about how parents are treated at meetings, but with the management of this district. We see problems in various areas, including IEP compliance, gifted programs, learning materials, lack of teacher and staff support, lack of accountability for our superintendent, bullying, and athletics. Mr. Lum, none of these concerns are petty or childish. Yes, parents have complained to the board, perhaps the board has grown weary of this. However, we are a locally-run state. Our children are at the mercy of this school board. Mr. Howe, in your speech last week, you discussed a haters' club. We did not come together through hatred and anger. Yes, there has been sadness, frustration, and exhaustion, but we are coming together in hope, determination, and perseverance to make this a better school district. There is hatred and anger, however, and it has come from your mouth, not just at basketball games, but at last week's board meeting through your spiteful and vindictive comments. Mr. Howe, your expressed hatred and anger in both your speech and your later comments to Mr. Gray are the exact reason many in the community, myself included, feel you should no longer be an active member of this school board. My 10-year-old wanted to come tonight and speak to you himself in regards to the speech therapy issue, but I was afraid of him seeing behavior that was displayed last week. I spent a large portion of my time teaching my son that his behavior has an impact on those around him. I cannot in good faith expose him to behavior like yours, Mr. Howe. If my son was to see a grown man who is in the leadership role behaving the way you did, it would counteract everything we have taught him. Superintendent Bell, you knew the severity of the situation with Coach Boucher, David Howe, and the community. You could have prepared the board for that meeting in March, but you did not. Not only did you not prepare the board for the meeting, you chose to sit silently when the meeting became so bitter. You let David Howe, but above all, the entire board, look like fools who had to sit in silence due to being uninformed. That meeting and the damage it caused in a relationship between the community, the administration, and the board is entirely your fault. This entire situation has signified on what we already knew, and that is that you were not a part of our community and never have been. You were completely removed from the many issues we, the community, face. You were not there when my child has to say goodbye to his friends because their parents no longer feel this district can effectively teach their children. This is saddening because we have the two most important assets for a strong district: a great community and hard-working teachers. What we do not have is good leadership. We are not just opposed to specific policies, nor are we simply disappointed with the poor implementation of various programs. We are opposed to your leadership style. We have observed deceit, intimidation, coercion, and unfair treatment. This self-centered attitude of behaviors has had a profoundly adverse effect on everyone in the northern Lebanon School District. The public perception is that certain people get special treatment, the parents and community are not important, and holding people accountable is only appropriate for some and not for others. To return to your comments, Mr. Lum, we are united. We are united in our conviction that Dr. Bell has not offered effective leadership, but in fact has created a toxic environment in which the necessary improvements in our district cannot be achieved. You and former board members can tell us we are being childish, spiteful, and mean, or worse, use religious language to intimidate us. This will no longer work. It will not work on parents, it will not work on teachers, it will not work on board members. We are united. We are united in that we want change. Thank you.
And Rachel, we did receive a letter from your son. It was very well-written, and we thank him for his comments.
Thank you. If you could respond, he's been waiting for a response for like four days, because he's
I just read it.
Would love, if you could, just at any time, he would love a response. Thank you.
It was very, very well-written, and
Thank you. His speech therapist got him to that point.
Are you Eve B. Musterfer?
I'm Eve B. Musterfer. I'm a member of our local community. My husband and I both graduated from northern Lebanon, and are business owners. We're farmers here in Anvil area. Our location is Jonestown Road, Anvil. And as you notice, I sent out a piece of paper to each of you. That's not my greeting to you. Those are words that I wouldn't speak myself, but I wanted you to be aware of the issue that we're having at East Hanover Elementary School. A lot of disruptions, a lot of things that our children are hearing every day, and it's not okay. I have met with Mr. Wagner, our school principal, and he heard my concerns. He shared my concerns. He voiced that he's shared his concerns as well. It's disrupting our school atmosphere. From what I understand, there's disruptions all the time. I've been volunteering with our reading program for four years, and I'm not sure what changed this past year, but almost every time I'm in there, which is once weekly, I'm seeing or hearing something that shouldn't be happening. Now, from what I understand, these are coming from the IU-13 and the emotional support children, and I'm not putting any of this blame on the teachers. I believe these kids are a handful, and don't get me wrong, I feel for them. But the way they are acting in our schools and around the rest of the kids, it's not acceptable, it's not appropriate. Like I said, I talked with Mr. Wagner. He told me what else I could do would be to contact Mr. Javich, and Mr. Kinsey, and Dr. Bell as well. So what I did is I emailed Mr. Javich. I have not gotten a response from him. I asked him to share my concerns with Dr. Kinsey and Dr. Bell, and hopefully we could brainstorm together on some solutions. Because to me, I don't have a PhD, but some things are black and white. I mean, if we don't draw the line somewhere, how are our kids going to understand right from wrong and have a common respect? The things that they're hearing today is just making them numb. My daughter comes home, she's like, "Oh, Mom, we hear that every day. Our teachers tell us to lock those kids out in the hall because they're disrupting, and we don't want them interfering with our class." They turn the lights on and off. The cussing is just unacceptable. So I'm not looking for an answer here tonight, but I want you to be aware, and I'd like to think that you'll hear my concerns and you will try to come up with a solution, because what it's doing to our kids, it's not right.
Thanks, Eve. Brian Wolfe.
Thank you, Madam President. Board members, and sweet Mary over in every corner. It's been a while since I've been at a board meeting. My name is Brian Wolfe, and I'm a past northern Lebanon board member, and I'm here tonight because of my concern that the recent attacks on our superintendent will ultimately damage the policies and the programs we worked hard to implement, and which have had a positive effect on thousands of students over the last two decades. In 1991, I was elected to the school board, which began a 20-year period of service to the district. I served on and chaired each of the three board committees at one time or another. I also served as vice president for quite a few years, and then as president for seven years at the end of my term. During my 20 years on the board, we worked as a team, even though in some issues, we were polar opposites. We debated issues, we challenged each other, and then we voted. Once a decision was made, we stuck together as a unit, and then let the administration implement the policy with no micromanaging by the board. One of the best things we did in 1999 was to hire Dr. Don Bell as our superintendent. I served on the search committee, and recall vividly that there were 17 resumes to review, and we ended up choosing him as our number-one candidate. This counters false information that was given out at a recent parents' meeting at the Bunker Hill File Company, where it was alleged that we had only two candidates from which to choose. My recollection of the facts has been substantiated by an April 14, 1999 Patriot News article. After hiring Dr. Bell, we accomplished great things together, and the students and families of the district benefited from the teamwork between the board and administration and staff. I know my time is short, but I think a quick review of some of the highlights is in order. Dr. Bell worked with our legal team to recover $27 million of our building fund that was lost in the John Gardner Black investment fraud case. This put our stalled building and renovation program back on track, and we were able to finish renovating all five buildings, plus add the middle school wing. With money left over, we were even able to build a new all-weather track. Dr. Bell found that our curriculum and textbooks had not been updated since 1985, and so we developed a four-year curriculum review cycle which is still in place today, and it is the vehicle which updates curriculum and textbooks. It also continues to give teachers the flexibility to write their own curriculum and request new materials as needed. During that time, we negotiated three successful teacher contracts. Under the NLEA union leadership of Rick Bastian and Matt Verdenka, and with them working with Dr. Bell, there was harmony and teamwork and trust between the union, the administration, and the school board. I could go on to speak about the V3 Academy, college, and the high school and other successes, but let me cut to the chase. I have been observing this school board for some time now, and it is nothing like the boards on which I served and which I led as president. I've heard and read the negative Facebook comments about Dr. Bell supposedly being the cause of all our problems, the attacks on his character, and the modest home he lives in, the money he makes, the school's PSSA test scores, the unhappy parents over the weighted reading test scores, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe this is all a big smokescreen, and it would do us well to see who is pulling the strings behind the scene. You know those three teachers' contracts that I referred to? They were accomplished without any interference by the PSEA, the State Teachers Union. But now, they are interfering, and they are experts at dividing our community and conquering and stirring us up to get what they want. Unfortunately, it was a big gift to them by the school's mishandling of the Gary Boucher issue. But the fact is, we already have a union member who has been trying to get elected as board president. We have another union member serving on the board, and she is seeking reelection.
Good job, Greg.
And a new candidate who is a union member, and he is seeking a seat on the board. Actually, these two union members have banded together with three other candidates and are running as a team. They unwittingly are doing PSEA's bidding by intending to see that Dr. Bell doesn't get another contract, because PSEA sees him as their major roadblock. Have you seen the banners hanging in our towns? Have you seen the banners hanging in our towns and along our country roads? They say, "Northern Lebanon: A legacy of unity." Well, we had unity, and teamwork, and pride, and trust, and we can have it again. I will not stand by and risk losing all that we worked for and prayed for and established over the last two decades. Therefore, I'm announcing my candidacy as a writing candidate
Oh, my gosh.
for the northern Lebanon School Board. I'd appreciate your prayers and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Your comments. Roy Zimmerman?
Okay, I kindly ask for my time. Good evening, board and community. My name is Roy Zimmerman. I live in 2206 Monz, Anvil. I stand before you tonight as a former board member who had the privilege to serve this community for 12 years, and five of those as president. Serving the community and the district is not something that is taken lightly, and it's not easy volunteering your time, uncompensated, and many times misunderstood and unappreciated. Thank you for your service to our community. My recent observations of the board decorum have me very concerned. I served during a time when the board was very polarized and undermined administration, teachers, and parents. When we began to hold each other accountable for what we did and said, then we became unified, and many great things began to happen in our schools. Mr. Howe, your apology to the board and community was well-deserved, and not community. It's your turn to forgive, just as we all have been forgiven. There are allegations that board members met outside advertised meetings, avoiding public input and comment, to recommend where to place the kindergarten center at Jonestown Elementary School. If I am correct, all three of these committee members are running for reelection, and that is a violation of the law. Mrs. England, and I warned you I was going to tell you this. It is my understanding that you have chosen not to support the educational system of the northern Lebanon schools at the V3 cyber school, thus placing your child in the Commonwealth Connection cyber school at a cost to this community of approximately Serving the community and the district is not something that is taken lightly, and it's not easy volunteering your time, uncompensated, and many times misunderstood and unappreciated. Thank you for your service to our community. My recent observations of the Board decorum have me very concerned. I served during a time when the Board was very polarized and undermined administration, teachers, and parents. When we began to hold each other accountable for what we did and said, then we became unified, and many great things began to happen in our schools. Mr. Helf, your apology to the Board and Community was well-deserved, and not "community." It's your turn to forgive, just as we all have been forgiven. There are allegations that Board Members met outside advertised meetings, avoiding public input and comment to recommend where to place the kindergarten center at Jonestown Elementary School. If I am correct, all three of these committee members are running for reelection, and that is a violation of the law. Mrs. England, and I warned you I was going to tell you this. It is my understanding that you have chosen not to support the educational system of the Northern Lebanon Schools at the V3 cyber school, thus placing your child in the Commonwealth Connection cyber school at a cost to this community of approximately $10,000 per year.
That spells bonus, right there. $9,000.
Not only that, you also have or are hosting at your residence up to additional four other district students that have chosen Commonwealth Connection cyber school, in total costing this district approximately $50,000. This district created V3 cyber school to keep this exact thing from happening because we were bleeding with all the cyber schools in Pennsylvania. If you would have chosen V3 cyber school, it would have cost the district approximately $4,000 per student. Mrs. England, it is my understanding you are running for reelection for the Board. If you sincerely believe that this district cannot meet the needs of your child through the traditional classroom setting or V3, then I would ask you not to run again for When Boards do not monitor themselves and let these kinds of behaviors manifest themselves, you have chaos. Where chaos is created, where chaos is, a vacuum is created. And that is why you have this outcry from the community. However, I believe it... Yes, same word, Brian. Smokescreen for what's behind this. Let me just say this. There are valid issues with IUPs. My kids had them. There are valid issues. I'm not going to undermine those. But Saul Alinsky rules for radicals number 12. This is what's going on. Pick the target, freeze it, personalize it, polarize it, cut off the support network, and isolate the target from sympathy. Go after people and not institutions. People hurt faster than institutions. People realize what's going on here. Some other Board behavior is giving privilege and confidential information to the PSEA, and in turn, giving it to the community. In turn, this has activated the community outcry that is laced with half-truths. Not about education, but to have community against the leadership and Board Members. And in turn, as Brian said, we know the support that those PSEA Members that are running, where their support comes from. Ladies and gentlemen, if all those that are running that have a PSEA membership, we'd have one-third of this Board being run by the PSEA. That is not appropriate. I've invested many years, over 300-plus meetings, into seeing our district change, grow, heal, and come together to offer our students great opportunities. I've served on the Management Committee and Negotiations Committee for three contracts. People, we have a great school district. We have great students, parents, teachers, administrators, and classified staff. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. I've been moved by all this, and it's time to put my money where my mouth is, and I'm writing as a candidate for Board Seat also. Thank you.
I feel like I need to respond to what was just said. I find it interesting that those who openly criticize my decision to cyber school my son are people who have not asked me questions. I would be glad to privately answer any questions about why, as a family, we chose to remove our oldest son from Northern Lebanon, and why, after trying the V3 Academy for three weeks, we chose a different cyber school. I have also been guilty of jumping to conclusions without asking questions and getting facts, so I know it is easy to do. I am sure those of you who are parents understand that my family comes first before my loyalty as a Board Director. I am fiercely determined to see Northern Lebanon improve and become a better district. But I want to be very clear that I will not sacrifice my family in my efforts to do what is best for Northern Lebanon. Thank you.
Seth Heckman?
My name is Seth Heckman, and I live at 138 Creekview Drive, Jonestown. I want the Board to know that we, the parents, we, the taxpayers, and we, the people, are not going away. We are demanding change. We are demanding transparency. We are advocating for our children, for our teachers, for our properties, and for our community. I want you to think about some relevant Ronald Reagan quotes. To sit back hoping that someday, some way, someone will make things right is to go on feeding the crocodile, hoping he will eat you last. But eat you, he will. We, the people, tell the government what to do. It does not tell us. Evil is powerless if the good are unafraid. And last of all, when you can't make them see the light, make them feel the heat. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Kristi Gensler?
Hi, my name is Kristi Gensler. I'm a resident of Northern Lebanon at Pineapple Road. I was not able to attend last Tuesday's meeting due to I was out of town, but I've taken the opportunity to watch the meeting on video several times. I was very appalled by the many statements by David Hauck and Stephen Loeb, and I would like to respond to those tonight. David Hauck, what you called "chance" were not chance at all, not at any game. If I must say, that attendance and behavior, we all could do without. You also...I'm sorry. Chance were not chance at all, not at any game. In fact, you were actively attempting to overrule coaches' decisions of his players, disturbing parents, including my family, and discouraging the players of our own team out on the court. As for your presence not being recognized at games, you were recognized. If I must say, attendance and your behavior, we could all do without. You also mentioned vandalism that was done to your property. Maybe children in the hallway where you yelled out that you would make sure this was Gary Burchett's last year of coaching and his job posting two weeks later. Maybe they took that to heart. That's why it's very important to set examples. Please note, I'm not excusing your own behavior or act here, but they are children. We are adults. As far as calling out haters, I'm not sure what you were addressing. The issues you brought up last week of us questioning salary allowance and the contract issues of Dr. Bell is far from being a hater. It's called being a tax-paying business and real estate investor resident of our district. And most of all, we are parents of a child, and we expect core values to be set into place from their teachers, administrators, and the Board. A child I hope one day is sent off to college with the right amount of education so he can later provide to his own family. Everyone in this room has important concerns and issues, and that doesn't make them haters. They simply want to know where their hard-earned money is being spent. A comment that you made of not wanting a head coach to be able to dismiss a junior high coach just proved to me to be a personal vendetta. Because you were friends with this coach, you sit with him, this fired coach, at every game, and while you were so-called chanting to Coach Burchett, could we say that hatred is coming from you? Were you angry at Coach Burchett for letting him go? I personally thought your actions at the games, and now this resignation letter in a hole, has shown core, core value. I feel strongly enough not to just have you step down, but to leave the Board completely, which is why we have a petition. Just so you know that we have a petition out there. Lastly, Steve Loeb. I really hated to do this, but I'm going to because of the comments that were made. And I'm sorry to do this personally, but your comment of being childish and petty. My child's future is at stake here. I find not being childish and petty not at all. The abbreviation for school is an institute designed for the teaching of students or pupils under the direction of teachers, and I feel the focus should be on that. Providing our teachers with the proper equipment and material in this workplace to do just that, laptops going down for 20 minutes in class, time-prolonging lessons that kids cannot get fulfilled in a classroom time, where my son tells me he literally is doing nothing because they weren't prepared for the breakdown, is not childish or petty. Teachers, good teachers, leading our district are feeling forced to take an early retirement. Math and reading levels not allowing our children to succeed in college that they went into, and having to transfer out into intermediate colleges after their first semester because they were not prepared for Northern Lebanon. Good teachers being taunted or afraid for their jobs, this is not at all childish or petty. After speaking with you on the phone in regards to many of these issues, and you asked me what side I'm on, I didn't know. I didn't know there were sides. I didn't know there were sides at this school. I'd like to see unity, but I don't see it. I don't see it at all. I don't call it childish. You told me if Dr. Bell leaves the district, you will leave. When I turned that, if I was to pick sides, it's when I did. And here is why. I ask, are you here for the children? And the district, are you here for one man? That man, Dr. Don Bell, who doesn't even acknowledge his community with eye contact at least? Who smirks behind his computer as such? Of myself standing here speaking, I might be saying, as I watch him, a man who is not involved with his community events, that I go to purposely to look for him. Is it because he lives 50 minutes away? Is it not a priority? Maybe it's not a priority of him as the Superintendent to be there? I think in our children's eyes, it's called respect. It's core values that are to be taught. A man who has no problem taking his vehicle allowance and bonuses, while my children and others are struggling to pay to participate in everything they do in this school, and every year, it's more and more. Our taxes go higher, but our little penny-pinching price is here to play sports, to do this, to do that, keeps on going up and up, maybe not in one amount. I'm almost finished. A man who has no problem taking his vehicle allowance, which I already said, while our children are struggling. How is it in our district is suffering financially, but Don Bell is profiting? Executive sessions are becoming more and more, and I feel a little bothered by this. I do realize they're legal with the whole War. My question here is if they are in sessions alone with Dr. Bell. Again, I ask, how are these concerns petty or childish? They are simply taxpayers and parents like myself, one who answers and some accountability, because our children do not. And Brian Wolf, I did not have this written here. I was not planning on responding to you, but we did get Dr. Bell's salary open to the public, and maybe when you were in, things were different. We are now in 2015, and I don't know if you looked last, but we are way upside down. So I think your comments and looking so good and running are going to be complete failure.
I'm sorry. First name's Michelle, and you live on Elmo Road.
Hi, my name is Michelle Moyer. I live on Elmo Road in Anville. I am a graduate of this school, as well as my son, and my daughter is currently enrolled as a sophomore. I'm here to discuss an issue of bullying. My story begins in 7th grade. My daughter was harassed daily, not by her peers, but rather a few female teachers in the middle school. I would not be exaggerating to say my daughter was sent to the office two to three times per week for dress code violations. She was humiliated over and over and over again in front of students in her class, as well as during lunch or in the hallways or in the presence of office staff. Some examples: She was sent to the office for wearing a pair of shorts that were too short, another time for a T-shirt that had an inappropriate message. Yet, several other girls wore the exact same shorts and the exact same shirt, and nothing was said to them. She was punished for wearing yoga pants, open-toed shoes, and believe it or not, for wearing tight jeans. 99% of her violations were under false pretense based on the documentation of their student planners, and the 1% that she was truly in violation of, well, those policies only applied to certain students, and that certain student was my daughter. She was threatened by Mrs. Plummer, stating that she was going to buy and force my daughter to wear boys' gym shorts for gym class. On many occasions, the office staff was baffled as to why she was ever even sent to the office but told to have a seat anyway. Apparently, these violations were only noteworthy, coincidentally enough, at the end of the day, or after a test, or during lunch, which she was then forced to miss. And yet another incident: A male teacher took my daughter's cell phone and camera as she was putting it into her locker prior to the first bell, per student planner, that is the policy, and told her she could pick it up at the office at the end of the day. Well, at the end of the day, the odds were broken. Per Mr. Javich, I couldn't prove anything. So after providing timestamp photos to Mr. Bell indicating the devices were fully functioning prior to the teacher taking them, Bell finally agreed to reimburse me the full value of her belongings. Thank you, taxpayers. Let's move on to 8th grade. My daughter was the victim of two crimes at school during that year. The first was a social media attack. I notified administration immediately and provided a copy of the police report. However, the bullying continued until the person finally moved to Florida mid-school year. Fast forward three months, Mr. Javich and Mr. Reist tried to sweep the second crime under the rug by insisting that they both watched school surveillance four times, and they were not able to see any crime take place. I told Mr. Javich that I would begin to view the video footage, and he told me, "I'm not allowed." So I gently reminded him of my rights and asked him to notify the Pennsylvania State Police. While viewing the video with Mr. Javich and Mr. Reese smug hackling in the background, within 15 minutes of viewing the tape, there it was, clear as day. Of course, I had to call the PSP because administration once again crumbled under the pressure. End result: Criminal charges were filed and restitution was made payable to my daughter. Moving on to 10th grade. On March 19, 2015, Mr. Keener, a high school principal, called me at work and informed me of a situation of a sexual nature. I demanded that he immediately call the Pennsylvania State Police, to which he insisted there is absolutely no reason whatsoever to contact them. Within an hour, I did get a phone call from Trooper Trey, sitting in Mr. Keener's office, and we set up a time for my daughter and I to go to the police station. So we went to the police station, and within one hour of sitting there, charges were brought against two students at Northern Lebanon High School and another student from a different district for harassment, sexual harassment, child porn distribution, and possession of child pornography. And just last week, my home was vandalized, along with three of my vehicles. According to Anville's track record, we should all be afraid for our children's safety, well-being, and success. and success. Each time a crime was committed against my daughter, I notified administration with phone calls and letters. Yet each and every member has successfully done nothing to discourage it and has failed to protect the innocent. As a parent, I should never have to educate you on how to do your job, or waste my time reading to you your own policies and instructing you on the proper time to contact authorities. This should all be standard protocol. Instead of protecting my child, administration has chosen to fully contribute to her mental anguish by forcing her to share classes with the same people who violated her, who stole her innocence, and devastated her emotionally. My story begins with teachers and administration demonstrating to students how to be a successful bully by your direct actions towards our children and your interaction with the parents. You have lied and attempted to cover up the willful ignorance you have mastered. And my story ends with criminal charges filed against six Northern Lebanon students in three years. My family will no longer be silent. We will no longer be a victim to your collapse in leadership, failed policy, and outlandish abuse of authority. You're not fooling anyone. And sadly, it's our students that are tied to your whipping post. If you do not have the backbone or the character required to be successful in your role, step aside, as this room right here is filled with individuals that have no problem stepping in and taking charge. I'm almost done. With teen suicide at an all-time high from bullying today. Today is the day I demand leadership that possesses integrity, morals, and compassion, rather than a bunch of cowards hiding behind some lame title. And now that I know you all are running, my name's Michelle Moyer, and I'm running as a write-in candidate for the board, too.
Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, my name's John Light. I live at 689 North Lancaster Street in Jonestown. I know most, if not all, the members, there are a few I don't. It's concerning the athletics department and the basketball coaching position, as it was put to me. No one was fired, position was open. I would just start by saying that tomorrow, if you go to work and your boss says you're one of one and your position's open, you're fired. In case you can't figure that out. But look, I'm not going to use any names. I don't need to use names. The fact is, I spoke to six of the nine board members, not Mr. Arnold, and not Mrs. Warner, and also Mr. Martell. Don't ever call nine people one night when they're going to call you back, because six of them are going to call at one time and leave messages. To make a long story short, I wanted to know, simple answer to simple question. What was the reason for opening the position and who opened the position? Well, I understand the board is trying to repair the current situation. That doesn't get to the bottom of the problem. How did you arrive at this point? After speaking with several board members, it became clear the board had no idea the position was going to be open and was never informed, and it is not a mandate that they are informed. The opening of a head coaching position at Northern Lebanon in the athletic department is the sole responsibility of the athletic director, who answers to no one. It's solely his decision. After further questioning, one of the board members actually told me exactly what the hierarchy is. The athletic director is evaluated by the high school principal. The high school principal is evaluated by the superintendent. The coaches are evaluated by the athletic director alone with oversight by the, let me get this straight, the superintendent. The superintendent serves as oversight only and only gets in on the evaluation of a coach if he has pertinent information. And this is what's told to me directly from him. What I don't understand is, in order to hire a high school varsity coach, the athletic director takes applications, he then submits his recommendation to the high school principal and the superintendent, who then submits it to the school board for an up-and-down vote. My question is, how hard is it to figure out that when you're going to open a position, you would do the exact same thing? It would be recommended to the board, and then the board votes on it. I got answers from one board member who said, "Well, we can attribute it to being new." I work at a multimillion-dollar company. The new guy doesn't make decisions. He has to. I also understand the position being open. But if the superintendent has oversight and the high school principal, and also the athletic director over the coaches, then maybe we need some more open positions. Because not being qualified is no excuse. There has been no effort by the board to correct the situation. I also asked the athletic director if ever the job was offered, the position, to which he said, "It's a personnel issue, I can't answer that." I said, "The position is open, is that correct?" "Yes, the position is open." I said, "So an open position doesn't have any personnel, was it offered?" The answer was no. I asked, "Was the position open because of an evaluation?" The answer was absolutely yes. I said, "Was it solely your evaluation?" He said, "Yes." I later find out that there is no evaluation. That's two lies. I find out from a board member, the position was offered with stipulations. That's another lie. You wonder why there's trust issues with the board, with the superintendent? It goes all the way down the line. If there's one thing I don't accept is being lied to, we're a public school, there is no reason. This is a position that was open with a sitting coach. The other question to the board members, the superintendent, the high school principal, and the athletic director. When was the last time a position was open while there was a sitting coach? Five, I don't know. Three, I can't remember. One, not during my tenure, and one, there may have been, but there might have been resignation involved. Are you kidding me? This is obviously a precedent, and it sheds light on the whole situation all the way down. And if it's an iceberg, the Titanic thing gets sunk by the top. It started at the bottom and worked its way up. You are responsible, each and every one of you, as well as the administration, to get it right. Obviously, I've heard plenty of problems tonight, and I understand this is just a small one. There are greater needs, and I don't envy any of you, and I'm not running for anything. I appreciate the people that are here. I understand are well-educated educators. I'm a union member, I won't say a word. I don't agree with any of them. But you know what? If I'm not a member, I can't complain. But I am a member of this community for 46 years. My parents are members, my sons. And when I get the same question from generations, from 80 years old to 15, asking, "What is going on?", then I want some answers. And these are not hard questions from public people. This is a public school. This is not a board of directors at a Fortune 500 company. We don't need to have executive session after executive session. And since it's just a position, it doesn't involve personnel.
Thank you, John.
My name is Nathaniel Finkin. I live on East Peasel Street in Jonestown. The public trust has been broken. That's why everyone's here, that's why people are angry. And it is simply hard to juxtapose the presence of two events and accept the explanations that have been given. Mr. Hauck's behavior at the game was observed, Mr. Hauck was overseen or overheard, telling Mr. Boucher that he would never coach again. His position is open. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Boucher is a graduate of Northern Lebanon, prior to this year, had two consecutive playoff teams, did not have a compliance problem, nor has one been offered. This cannot be mere coincidence. Mr. Hauck, your comments in the paper that we're connecting the dots too quickly? Forgive me, sir, we're not stupid. Of course, it had to do with your vendetta with Mr. Boucher. There's no other credible explanation. You used your vendetta against Mr. Boucher. You then manipulated the people around you to get the result you wanted, which was his removal. That's to the detriment of the people in this community. And sir, that trust will never be rebuilt. I watched your comments at the last meeting, your desire to be a Reagan Tea Party Republican, a fiscal hawk, someone who's going to keep the district's spending in line. And sir, as a registered Republican, I can appreciate all those values. And I think we should be prudent stewards of the people's money and the people's trust. And I don't know you from anything, sir, so I don't have a personal vendetta against you one bit. I've never heard you say anything other than what you've said to the board in previous meetings, or what you've said at basketball games. As a member of this community, sir, as long as you sit on this board, these trust issues will remain. It'll be the selfish thing you did, because while I'm sure you're a fine accountant and a fine steward of the public money, you no longer hold the public trust. And that's more important than anything else you can do for the board. Secondly, it's hard to juxtapose the things we've heard tonight, and frankly, the things we see. For example, it's a startling reality. You drive up to this building, I'd never been to this building before. Anyone notice that the sign to the school is crooked? That the L is crooked? If there's a Jaguar where the superintendent's car is. These two things should not happen in the same space. We have one principal overseeing two schools? You would have to be here to believe it. What school district does that? How do you possibly expect our children to succeed? When we don't even have a full-time principal for each elementary school, when we're cramming 30 and 35 kids into a class? As the crow flies, Palmier is nine miles away? There has been more than 18 kids in a kindergarten or secondary or elementary school class there for probably 10 years. Wonder of wonders, they're in the top third of the PSSA, we're in the bottom fifth. It's not worth it. And listen, I like Donna Bell. He went to Pitt, I went to Pitt, what could go wrong? But unfortunately, when you pay someone that much money and you hide it, and then we have the performance and the condition of the district that we have, with schools not being properly maintained, as you can clearly see when you drive up or drive away from this building, to one principal having the most thankless job ever, God love you, how you're a principal for two schools? I don't know how you do it without ripping your hair out or killing yourself, because that's just nuts. To have 30 and 35 kids in a single classroom when other districts have that, to have parents come up here and tell heart-wrenching stories of how their IEPs are non-compliant, because we don't have the money to hire a speech pathologist? Listen, I understand that we're a rural district, even a poor district. How do you justify paying our superintendent over $200,000 when those things happen? You cannot juxtapose these things in the same space and maintain the public trust. And unfortunately, this may cost us a very good man, because I don't know how you tell Dr. Bell to simply give back the money. You can't do that. Nor should he have to, because it was you that gave it to him. Dr. Bell has many things to answer for, all right? But he was offered the money and he took it. I don't begrudge anybody for accepting the compensation that was offered to them. I begrudge the people who inappropriately offered it in the first place, and that's all of you! So importantly, I'll say, the public trust has been broken. You can call Coach Boucher's dismissal minor. It's not minor, because he coached dozens of young men over the years. No, it's symbolic. It's symbolic of the nonsense that's happening behind the scene, frankly illustrative of how board members have abused their power to satisfy their own personal agendas at the expense of the well-being of the children. These things cannot stand. Those of you that are long-tended on this board need to take a good, hard look, you know, when you're up for reelection, or frankly, whether or not you even come to the next meeting or not. Because many of you have failed the public trust, broken the public trust, and until you depart, I fear the public trust will not be regained. Thank you very much.
Mr. Finkin, there is no Jaguar sitting back in the lot. There's a nice view of it sitting there, but it's not our superintendent's. I just wanted to confirm that or let you know that there is no Jaguar, probably not even in the parking lot. Just to let you know.
There was one on the way in.
Well, it's not our superintendent's. It's not the superintendent's.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Finkin.
Would a person with a turquoise Jaguar, if your lights are on? I don't see anybody leaving the room. Hi, my name is Dave Graybill. I live at 35 Webster School Road and have lived there since 1984. Been in this district for, of course, that many years. Love this district, think it has so much to offer. Not to admit, I, probably because I live on the West End, I must live in a cocoon, because I did not know all this was going on, until just in the past two weeks, I kind of caught up and heard up and read some newspaper articles and just tried to find out what's going on. My kids have come through the system back in the late 90s, and at that time, Northern Lebanon was going through some real rocky times. And I decided to throw my hat in the ring and run for school board. I did not come with any agenda. Public speaking is not my quality, I'll tell you that. In fact, I feel a little bit like Joel's fainting goat. I eat all the time. Most of the time, I'm bummed to be around, and my muscles twitch just before I eat. So I feel a little twitch in here. But seriously, do love this district, and I have to admit, I'm kind of disheartened by what I see, the trust. And I agree with you, Nathan, there's a huge mistrust that's gone on, and I love this gal right here. She's an awesome woman.
Yes, she is.
She taught a lot to my kids. She coached them, and she yelled at them a lot. But this is one gal that can listen and not speak a lot, but yet when she speaks, we listen. And we would shut up, because we knew Bix was mad. But I appreciate the fact that all the board members here, this is a tough job, and I don't care what your political stance is, this is a tough, thankless job. And so I'm here to announce the cheers and the boos, and I recommend we all throw our hat into the ring, because let's bring this community back together. And I think it is time. Recycling is my business. And like I said, public speaking is not. But I think one of my qualities is listening, like Bix. I reason, and I'm transparent. And I'm also a recycling specialist, and I'd like to say I think it's time to recycle some stuff in Northern Lebanon's woods. Because of that, I'd like to announce that I'm going to throw my hat in the ring as a righty too. Let's let the community decide what's best.
Good evening. Let's smile a little bit. I am very happy to be here this evening to share some excerpts of a recent communication that I received. Dear Mary Ann, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that you have been selected as one of the 2015 American as one of the 2015 American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year Merit Finalists for your program. I hope you will be able to join us during the 106th Annual Conference and Expo to be held June 24th to the 27th at the Hyatt Regency Jacksonville Riverfront in Jacksonville, Florida. On Thursday, during the opening general session, the National Teacher of the Year Award will be publicly announced, as well as the merit finalists, and you will be recognized. On Friday, the affiliate teachers of the year will be honored at the learning from the 2015 AAFCS Teacher of the Year Luncheon, sponsored by the textbook publishing company Goodheart Wilcox. On Saturday, you are invited to participate in the AAFCS Showcase for Your Work event, where you will display your program. Congratulations on your success. I look forward to meeting you during the annual conference. Best regard, Bev Card, the President of AAFCS. The AAFCS, American Association of Family and Consumer Sciences Teacher of the Year Award Program is 40 years old this year. From 1974 until the present, there have only been four teachers and their programs in the 501 school districts in Pennsylvania to have attained national recognition. This January, jurors from across the 50 states evaluated the applications from the state affiliate teachers of the year. And during that process, the jurors decided that the Northern Lebanon FCS program and I joined the ranks as the program and the teacher of national excellence. During the National Annual Conference in June in Jacksonville, I will become the fifth Pennsylvania teacher in 40 years to receive this award. I am proud to be working with the children and the young adults to support families and family life, and many of you have been in my classes. The members of this community know that what is learned in FCS classes is current, it is useful, and it improves their quality of life. They will often hear me say that what we learn in FCS is the real graduation test. This award is in great part due to the professionals in the FCS department. I would like to recognize and publicly thank Mrs. Flor Alquist and Ms. Cindy Miller for their dedication to excellence on a national level at Northern Lebanon. I would also like any current FCS students in attendance to stand and come to the front at the tables. In family and consumer sciences, it really is kids first. We are progressive, and now we have a national legacy. Dr. Bell, board members, Mr. Keener, and everyone in the room, please get out your cell phones. I'm not kidding. And please check our newly formed Instagram page at hashtag MLFACS. You too, Sue. And please excuse me while I take a selfie. Mrs. Alquist? Ms. Miller? This is a historic event, where the announcement of a nationally recognized family and consumer science program is taking place at Northern Lebanon. Please, take your pictures. I was honored to have Mr. Keener join me last year at the awards banquet in Lancaster, where I received the Pennsylvania Family and Consumer Science Teacher of the Year Award. I would like to extend an invitation to all of the administration and board to join me in Florida, as I am the AAFCS National Gold Medal Merit Finalist for Teacher of the Year 2015.
Good evening, board. Dr. Bell, how are you? Hail to you. My name's Matt Bushong, I'm on 56th Gulf Road, I'm on the west side of our district, pretty way up there, pretty close up there. I'm a teacher, coach at Central Dolphin. There's a few things I want to talk about tonight. First one is, I couldn't find a place for my daughter to do number two on the fields last night at your high school. We go up there for field hockey practice, she's a first grader, and couldn't get into school, which is good, for security purposes. The field houses were locked down, the concession stand was locked at the track, so the only place to go was a little hut, right next to the track, it had little ventilation things spinning up top, and my daughter, it's like almost coming out, right? And we're running up there, and she goes, I open the door, I walk in, she goes, "Oh my God, Dad, I don't have to go now." It smelled so bad, and there was just straight urine and poop, and I walked in and tried to get a seat offer and gag, and there was a track meet going on, two baseball games, a soccer practice, two youth field hockey camps that were mis-scheduled. But I was embarrassed. And I stood there, and I'm like, my daughter can't even poop here. And I slipped around, and I was like, there's a lot of people here. And like, where are they going to the bathroom? And I think they have to go in there, I think I was the only place to go. So I mean, it's not a lot for a quarter potty or two, I know we're hurting for cash, we're being financially raped here, but I think we can afford maybe two quarter potties on the grounds down there, I don't know. It's just, that's the first thing. So hopefully, it's early spring, and maybe they ordered them last week, and they'll be dropped next week, something like that, that would be great. The second thing is, Mr. Howe, you know, I agree with what was said before, but if you're going to resign as the president, man, you can't be on the board, it's just not going to work. This is the whole trust thing, and if you're not going to be, if you're not good enough to be the president, you're not good enough to be on the board. Because everyone else that's sitting right here could be the president. And I appreciate all you guys do, I know it's a tough job, you don't get paid for it, and I appreciate all you guys do, and Dr. Bell. And I'm not running, I am not running, I do not want to run, I have enough going on. So that's my feeling. And the third thing is, you know, Dr. Bell, I invite you to move into our district. Dillsburg is a beautiful town, I coached football there for three years, I know a lot of your people down there. But please move into our district, it's a lovely district. And you know what, I mean, the money we pay you to travel, that's, it's a long travel to Dillsburg, it is, I did it for three years. I drove from Anvil to Dillsburg to coach football, and it's a long travel. But you were supposed to move in here like 12 years ago, and we're paying you six grand a year to travel. Does anybody in here get paid to drive to work?
Yeah.
I mean, only if I estimate a landscape job to figure that in, but it's, you know, it's an allowance that, you know, it means a lot when you're in a district here, and you go to the football games, and you know, I'm a Central Dolphin, I'm the football coach there, and our superintendent is in charge of CD East and CD, and she is there for every event, and they make their faces. It means a lot. But it has nothing to do with what the work you guys are doing, it's not, all right? So it's one more to say. Thank you.
And thank you, Matt, for your comments also. It's 9 o'clock. Seriously, we do thank you, good or bad, for the comments that you've made, because it's your kids, our kids, and it's important that we care. As usual, we are not, and especially at this point in time right now, we don't make comments, for those of you that are new to the, coming to the board meetings, we do not make comments right after the public input session, and especially now, we do need to move on with our agenda. And I'm mistaken here, I'm sorry, we didn't list the budget at all on the agenda next month, because here we are, sitting in April, and...
You have, you have two places, the actual budget, the cover sheets, personnel request, the administration, maybe the board, your actual voting being, and then there'll be another vote in June.
Okay. Thanks. All right, it's time to move on to our agenda, and I need somebody to take over the consensus agenda. Steve, is that from where you're heading?
I'd like to move to approve the consensus agenda.
Any discussion on the consensus agenda? And that would be items A through H. Not unless proceed to vote on those items? And we just have to conduct a meeting, and I know you guys want to talk, do you please mind stepping out in the hallway, just so that people that want to hear, have been here, that are still here? Thanks. All right. Mary, please, your vote called out. Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
All in favor? And now we need to move on to the management committee. Steve, would you do that one also?
I would move I and A. Second?
Discussion? Lon, Mary? England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
All in favor?
Move I and B. Second?
Discussion?
I'm going to agree with this, I appreciate what they have done investing in the community, much like we did Alerta before, or their new campus behind us. I think it's wonderful they're willing to invest in our community, and I think it's great that we can approve this.
Have both the township and the county already approved Alerta also?
Have you heard it?
Over there. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the items?
I'd like to echo that, I think Bell Evans has been a great partner to our community, offers a lot of great jobs, building your current plan without Alerta, and I really enjoyed the article about potentially organic pet food and helping us eat healthier, and as we saw it, you know, our consumer science department said so, so thank you for everything you've done.
Mary Ann? Not Mary, roll caller? Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Alston?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
All in favor?
Move I and C. Second?
Discussion? I spoke on this item last week, and I hope that you can all, we'll all vote to accept it, I think it's a very pretty and good budget.